At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We're at six thirty and thirty seconds. Roll call, please.
Brian Geezy.
President.
Doug Huestedt.
President.
Brian Mahan.
President.
Barry Shesky.
President.
Cody Przyselski.
President.
For those who are able, please stand and move your hat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, if I could have a virtue card reading, please. Unity. Unity helps us work and live together peacefully. We feel connected with each other and all living things. We value the specialness of each person as a gift, not as a reason to fight or be scared. With unity, we accomplish more together than any one of us could alone. You are practicing unity when you treat all peoples as members of one human family, see the gifts and differences, refuse to join in when others express prejudice, solve conflict through listening and finding solutions, care for the earth and all living things, act like a peacemaker wherever you go. Affirmation. I practice unity with others. The joy of one is the joy of all. The herd of one is the herd of all. The honor of one is the honor of all. Thank you, Pat. Okay. In addition, we have the Board of Education Guidelines. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members being respectful of time. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. Thank you. I must make apology to our new board member. I neglected to make a formal introduction last month. We would like to welcome Cody Przyselski. I got it right. We'd like to welcome Cody to our team. Welcome, and I'd like to give you a little bit, tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the board.
Thanks, Brian. So I was born and raised here in Nacusa. Graduated the high school. I went to W. Whitewater for my degree in public health and then Missouri for my masters in nutrition. I love kids, teaching and being a coach. I was a track coach and I helped out the wrestling team here. So, you know, part of being in healthcare, I love to give back to the community and I'm a very caring person, so that's why I signed up for the school board. I'm happy to be a part of the team and the school to give back and keep being a role model for those in communities. Thank you.
Cody, thank you for being here. We really appreciate it. We also have one other congratulations in order here. Nathan Black. Mr. Black. Mr. Black is going to be our AMS principal and switching roles a little bit. But we're looking forward to having you over there. Do you have anything?
Well, thank you. I really enjoyed the opportunity to be able to be working with the staff. Right now, we've spent the last two days in Wisconsin Dells with the leadership team there and just being able to set priorities. And I really have to say many thank you to Mr. Rogers on his way out and ways to be able to work with the staff and work alongside him as part of that transition. So I've already had a month's worth of sort of easy... I can be involved with what's going on without having to be responsible for that thing that's going on, and that sure makes for a nice little internship on your way in. I certainly appreciate the welcome of the staff and the parents and looking forward to reaching out to many of the parents along the way and just sort of finding out how they want us to keep building the community. So really excited.
We hope the role is rewarding for you and that you're going to find success in it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to entertain any public comments. During the public comment period of the agenda, the board welcomes comments from any district president, not a member of the board or any item not on the agenda. Please note that pursuant to state law, the board cannot engage in conversation with you but may ask questions. The board may refer the item to staff, a standing committee, or a future agenda for discussion and action. Each person wishing to speak will have up to three minutes to speak. Speakers are asked to provide their name, address, and topic for discussion. Any public comments at this time? And if you could, do you have a preference where they stand?
No.
Very good.
Go ahead.
All the comments, I love it.
All right. So I guess my main public comment. Amy's 10918 West Street in Nacusa. My husband's with me. I don't know if he wants to say anything, but... So I guess my main public comment that I would have to say for this meeting. We have a daughter that just graduated, and I guess graduation would have to be the main thing that I would like to address of this school board. I know I brought it up to Mr. Whitmore and Mr. Johnson, and I talked to my daughter today, and she would have came with us, but she had to work. So her thoughts that she wanted to send along were, she felt we've talked about the schedule for eons and we've done with that. We also have a daughter who is a freshman, now a sophomore. So we'll still have to continue to deal with this for a couple more years. But our daughter that just graduated had to say that she felt there was not enough time to, A, say goodbye to teachers, that they wanted to... A lot of her friends also had that same comment, that there was just not enough time between the end of the school year and graduation. And I've said it before, I've said it to Mr. Johnson, I've said it to Mr. Whitmore, there was not enough time built in between the finals and graduation. So seniors should not have been there that last week of school. The schedule should have been different. It should have been... It should have been different, I guess. And that will be my thoughts until, A, it changes, or B, we're done with school and my other daughters graduated. Because I've said it when I was in high school, and I know it was a long time ago, we didn't do finals as seniors and we were done the week before everybody else. And those seniors, we were out of school and it was freshmen, sophomores, and juniors left in that building. And it was fine. The world continued.
Well, I think, can I say something about that? And I know because of the kids who were there that week, some kids actually missed school that week because they had registration at colleges.
Yeah.
And they missed... Some of those students missed stuff at colleges, their colleges they're going to because they had finals the last week where Rapids was off, Port was off, Pittsville was off the week before, the whole school was gone before we were even off. But Nacusa, for some reason, decided to have our seniors there the last week of school. That was the same situation. I graduated, we graduated the week before school was out and we didn't have to go that last week. We got... It's a reward. I mean, these kids have worked how many years to graduate from school? And they had to go the same days, the last day as the juniors, the sophomores, and everybody else. And it's like, why didn't we not reward these kids like all the other schools in the area did? Let me tell you, when you have friends out of Rapids and they're at home for that week and you're at home or at school, they were happy... I wouldn't think any of them were happy that they were there. Plus, they were ducked. They were senioritis probably for them. I mean, I think we all had senioritis. Why are we making those kids come that week? And why are we expecting...
And still doing finals. Still doing finals till the last day of school. I mean, my senior was working part-time and trying to figure out all of her finals and then teachers were changing when stuff was due for finals that very last week of school. Which, that was not fair to her either. I mean, that was teachers' choices, but that was not fair to her also. So, okay, that part of them. So graduation itself, that was my first experience with graduation since I graduated twenty-seven years ago. I would just like to add that I was very... As a parent, I was very, very, very disappointed that there was nothing brought up about Brandy at all. She has been with that class since kindergarten and there was nothing for her. Nothing.
He says...
There was nothing on the slideshow. There was nothing. And I was extremely disappointed. Extremely disappointed. And I know that was the same thought of my daughter too, Brandy. She was not a close friend of hers, but that doesn't matter. She was a classmate of theirs since kindergarten and there was nothing for her. Nothing. And she's only been gone for two years. She was still in the high school with those kids. There should have been something up there in the slideshow with her picture. At the end of the slideshow, I know she was in the yearbook. That picture should have been up there. There should have been something. Also, one other thing I just wanted to add. Their caps, they should be allowed to decorate their caps. They really should. We pay a pretty penny for those cap goggles. They should be allowed to decorate them. A little individuality goes along with everything. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you very much.
Just as a parent, and, you know, like I said, we have to go through it again in three years. And, you know, we have another one coming through and we said those final schedules affect those freshmen, sophomores, juniors just as much as those seniors.
Do you have some written notes you'd like to keep, let us keep?
I don't.
Okay, no.
I don't. These are my CWSC notes that I...
We got... I really appreciate the comments and knowing that they'll, you know, we're going to take that into consideration.
I know you guys do, and I appreciate that you take the time to listen to us ramble and...
No, it's...
All that stuff.
Right, we're here. We work for you, okay? That's our job.
Yep, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. First of all, thank you and extend my congratulations to your daughter. It was a privilege to shake her hand on stage that day.
Thank you.
Be proud, very proud.
We are.
So thank you. Thank you very much. Any other public comments today? We do appreciate public comments. Even if it's sometimes hard to hear, we want to hear them and we want our public out there to know that this is a venue where you can come. So, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have our CWSC update. You were still standing for a reason.
I'm still here.
She doesn't want to sit down with that kind of standing?
Yeah. You can't get rid of me that easy. So, we had our meeting last night. And you still can't get rid of me because now I'm the governance council chair. So, for another year.
Congratulations.
So, we are going to be working on the contract. Still a work in progress and I believe it's due in January, so that'll be taken care of by then. We are going to be meeting with Mr. Black soon to get all of our ducks in a row with him and get all that worked on. We're working on a training plan for new members, kind of getting a new orientation thing. We've been working on that for years and we just kind of keep putting that to the side as new things come up. Other thing I wanted to mention too is we are going to be doing an advance again in hopefully late September, early October. And we would like to invite the board to that also. We've been talking about doing something at night, so probably a weeknight over at the middle school. So probably like five to eight, you know, maybe like a Thursday. One night for sure, two nights if we need it. Maybe one night, one week, and one night the next week. Just kind of throwing that out there. But we'd like to invite you guys, and if you have anything that you would like us to have on the agenda for that meeting, please let us know and we'll get it on there. But we'd like to invite you guys and, you know, like I said, anything that you would like us to talk about and involve, and we'll get you that agenda as soon as we have it created so you'll know what we're meeting about and talking about and how all that planned.
I have one note that has always kind of been on my mind.
Okay.
And I think we may have talked about it times, but one thing that's... It's hard to identify the governance process at times and the roles that we play as board members. And you as council, as an instrumentality of the district, the governance council has control of that and is essential to the school board for, as you have to say. And you and your members have the same roles that we do.
Yeah.
And so that might be a good opportunity for us to touch on that as we're all together.
Yeah. And that's one thing that we've been working on too, is trying to see, you know, what roles we are versus what roles you are and really just define our roles on our own council because that's been questioned by us quite a bit lately as we've had new members and as we're trying to get new members, kind of really letting new members know this is what your role would be, this is what you're doing, this, you know, kind of by the...
Sounds like you got it in mind already.
Yeah, so we're kind of working on that. But if you have any ideas on how that would be easier for us to do that, we would take any kind of help on that. Another thing, we had this past spring, we did our mulch fundraiser and we're going to do that again with Bruner Timber. Made pretty... I think we made decent money. So we're going to do that again. And then the kids are doing some different projects. So they're working on some of the projects throughout the city, working with the city and doing some... Trying to answer some questions for them. So one of the projects they're working on is trying to get rid of the goose population in the park. All extra goose traffic is better down there.
That's one that got some ideas.
Yes. Yeah, so they were working on that. Another one is the downtown noise pollution, which would be wonderful sometimes in the middle of the night when it's super loud. Another one was understanding the community garden, how that works, who gets to use it, how you get to use it, who you contact, all that kind of stuff. And then working with the city in tree beautification efforts. So those are a couple of the questions that they are looking into and those projects are going to go into next year and hopefully get some of that stuff answered and working on some of those projects. That is what I have. So like I said, advanced dates, late September, early October. Look for those and we'll nail down our topics, but you guys are very welcome to join us.
Thank you very much for presenting that on behalf of this evening. I say, I must apologize, I have not made his name. I would like, Monday nights are the most hardest to be there, but... Last night, Terry had me over here at a meeting while he was over there, but...
He saved us.
We'll try to be there. But thank you so much for, number one, serving on the council and, number two, for making your name.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Casey.
Over to your results. FBLA College and Career Readings. Ms. Jen.
Sorry, go ahead, Jen. I didn't realize. Otherwise, I had it. I was ready.
Oh, it's all good. Ready to... Okay. So it's been a while since I've been here, so we've got tons of updates. So my alphabet soup of stuff that I'm in charge of. So we'll touch on some future business leaders of America, some business and information tech, some career and technical ed, and academic and career planning. So start with the FBLA. We had forty-four members this year. We took fifth place at our regional leadership conference and had eighteen students that qualified for the state leadership conference in La Crosse. From that, we had a super successful showing with Nick Idenschenk. He is the new state Region Two Vice President. We just went to four days of state officer training at Edgewood College in Madison last week, like left directly from graduation. And we actually missed the first four hours of training. But he's already jumping full in with this, working with our FBLA PBL Foundation for the state, the other eleven state officers from across the state. One of his big initiatives is working with business partnerships. He's actually kind of spearheading that with the officer from Superior. So that's one of his big initiatives that he is doing with that. And he'll be helping represent Wisconsin at the national leadership conference we have next week that we fly out for. Nick is our fourth state officer. So with him being the Region Two VP, Saturday, February second, if you guys want to, we will be hosting our regional leadership conference again. So I know Mr. Johnson, Mr. Whitmore, Mr. Geezy have all partaken in the judging fun that happens. So keep it open in your calendar.
Mark me down.
One judge down. Only like seventy-five to go. But yeah, so Nick is super excited about this. He's our first male state officer from Nacusa, so he's kind of a trailblazer that way for us. But he looks to start the year off quite well. Haley Brown, who is a sophomore going to be junior, she is advancing to compete in Introduction to Business Communication. So she will be competing at the national conference, which is in Baltimore. And we fly out on Tuesday of next week out to Baltimore for that. We also have... So Haley and Nick go. Nick representing Wisconsin, Haley in competition. And then we have three additional members that are fundraising to go as well, to take part in the workshops, the networking, all those things that happen at the conference. So it's not just competition. There are keynote speakers from across the country. They have workshops put on by the national officer team as well as outside speakers. So that's where we'll be going. So Haley will be taking a test on business communication and hopefully doing quite well. I was named the Wisconsin Outstanding Local Chapter Advisor for the state. So I'll be representing Wisconsin at the parade of states. So I get this once in my advising career. So I'm pretty pumped over that. Getting to walk across the stage at nationals in front of, you know, sixteen thousand people will be a little daunting, but I hope I don't fall. I'm kind of clumsy. So, yeah, so that was a shock and a surprise at the state leadership conference, but a pretty awesome one at the same time. All right, so in career and tech ed, big thing in our department is Dave Osterbrink's retirement. He's kind of been our rock down in that tech ed department area. So, but we look forward to, and I see it's on the agenda, so to having Chad Dorhorse step in there as our new tech ed person, seeing what he'll do in the tech ed or, sorry, technology and engineering department and see what can continue to grow down there in the tech ed area. Our dual credit agreements continue to increase. We're now going to be including English. So oral communications, our students who take that with Mrs. Bradel, they'll be able to earn mid-state credit for taking oral comm. We're looking, because of Mary Bembo's retirement and Mr. Osterbrink's retirement, we're not sure with their replacements. That's just waiting on mid-state dean approval of their replacements to see how those transcript agreements work. But I know other instructors have been at least inquiring. Mid-state actually was part of a grant opportunity because to teach something like oral comm or math, you have to have eighteen graduate credits in that discipline. And it's not a lot of high schools faculty have that. So the state of Wisconsin with the Department of Workforce Development is working on a grant where they can subsidize the tuition needed to take those grad credits. So mid-state was part of a consortium of technical colleges that were part of this. We're kind of waiting on that. But I know we have some other faculty members, like in the psychology areas, sociology areas, that are at least inquiring and like, hey, if this grant goes through, I'd be interested in order to offer some of those dual credit options. In my area, I'll be able to offer marketing for the first time in many years. So we'll have a marketing class that is dual credit. College accounting for the first time, run independent study, that's dual credit. So we have a lot of options for our kiddos. And in youth apprenticeship, this year we had two. One was a one-year ITY that worked with Eric Saylor and the other one is a two-year CNA. So next year, we actually will probably have six. So we're going from two, we'll have two CNAs, one in IT, one in agriculture, natural resources, and then one in automotive and one in machining, manufacturing machining. So we're waiting on a couple of them to turn sixteen because they can't work until they're sixteen, but thankfully their summer birthdays. So we'll get them going once they get that employment.
Jen, just so that it can be out there, who are the businesses that are working with us? That's not that big a deal.
The IT one is in-house with the school district, working with Eric. Nacusa Court has both of our CNAs. The Rome, town of Rome, because it's the natural resources one doing with water, testing of the water samples and things like that. The automotive is with Cheryl Tire in Wisconsin Rapids and the manufacturing machining one is with Point Precision in Plover.
Awesome.
We just have to wait for some paperwork and turning sixteen for some of them. So Y is really growing drastically for us. Big jumps there. So we're hoping for some good results with these students. All right, ACP, so Academic and Career Planning. It's our second full year of full implementation for nine twelve. I think it's gone very well. We've adjusted the structure of... I used to have an advisory group. I was with the freshman group, but thankfully the other freshman advisors were willing to take on extra. That allows me now to float and help the different advisors when they need assistance. And overall, I heard that was a really positive thing from students as well as the faculty because when they have questions, now it's not a, hey, stop down during your prep or something like that. They can call if I'm not helping something else and I can go assist them. So I think that led to greater completion rates of things and allowing me to stop in and keep better track of where I'm on pace. Some highlights, we were part of a Marquette University study on academic and career planning where they, I don't know how or where they got names of different districts to contact, but we were part of that. I guess probably some CISA's and things like that were in contact. So we were part of their study on successful academic and career planning programs. So it'll be interesting when their study comes out. I'll be...
Did you let them look at your spreadsheet?
No. No. Actually, no, they got to look at it, but they don't get to touch it. NCPN is the National Career Pathways Network and I, with the suggestion of Mr. Johnson, put in for it to be a presenter and I was accepted. So in October, I'll go to Louisville, Kentucky and present on our ACP process and what we do in Nacusa and looking at it from the rural standpoint because a lot of the school districts that present there, they're very urban, high, you know, influential neighborhoods. So we're like, not bad. But to show that it can be successful. NCPN connects K-12, post-secondary, and business is what their conference is all about.
I think this is one of the things that we can celebrate as a district for being, for in your efforts, really, to move us ahead along this path. And I know there wasn't many team members here today in the administration that were part of it, but, you know, for Nacusa, I think we're pushing the boundaries where we are on that. Would you agree?
I would agree. When I go to CTE coordinator meetings and school-to-work coordinator meetings for our CISA or for the mid-state district, we are way ahead of our counterparts. And I think Mr. Johnson...
I would agree.
At like South Central Conference things.
Really, to put it in layman's terms a little bit, for academic career planning, you know, to identify and please, identifying career pathways for our students and then ensuring that we can have the curriculum available to them to help them attain those goals. Is that a good something?
I think so.
And we're doing that, we're starting to identify earlier.
Yep. I'm working with Cory at AMS. Really kind of, we're working backwards. So we started with senior year in mind and worked backwards. So now we have a pretty strong eighth grade component and we're filtering it down now. What are we going to do seventh grade and this, through the counseling department and then down to the sixth grade level? So I think, I think we're pretty solid.
Students that may be ahead of the curve, right, that are taking some... You know, it helps, it helps everybody, those that tap into the curve.
Oh, yeah.
Great to the people that just want to be professional and go to work.
And we do still have those students that they want to just work and it's great, but now they're at least looking at where can I work? I don't want to stay in mom and dad's basement forever. You know, now they're looking at where's a good paying job? Ten bucks an hour is okay to start. Where am I going to be after five years of working for this business with benefits? That's why I think youth apprenticeship is going to grow because our young... Because our young gentlemen who are doing the automotive and the machining, both of those businesses are offering post-secondary education, financial assistance. Both of them are offering, you know, work while they're going to post-secondary if they choose that route. So I think they're starting to see bigger picture than just, I'm just going to work. Well, let's work for something in high school that'll just build your career and you're starting out that many steps ahead than graduates even five years ago had. They weren't necessarily thinking, where am I going to be long-term? They were kind of like, alright, I graduate on June 10th and now what do I do? So.
I think, I just wanted to take an opportunity to celebrate that process.
And we should be. I mean, we, in central Wisconsin, I think we have one of the stronger academic and career planning systems in place. I really think we do, of, of any size school district.
Thank you.
I try. Spreadsheets just make it easy. We have had our struggles though. Motivation, we've had some advisors that have struggled with the process, either understanding it, getting the information that they need. And then the advisory structure, I think adjusting mine has really helped. I don't know, Nick, do you got anything to add? You want to do this?
It was useful in the end. I mean, I went to St. Cloud for my orientation and they asked for a lot of, they said, compile this information. And I was like, oh, that's what we just did in our career financial binder. So I, it's all done from, pretty much aside from the college information they want in there, but that's specific to them.
So knowing that, and it wasn't just Nick coming back, there were others who came back and said, yeah, my, my school, when I went to register, they said, I need to bring these things and it's all in my binder. And I was like, see? It is useful to you. So I think that's also going to lead to success, more success. Because those seniors are now able to tell the juniors, the sophomores, the freshmen, hang on to it, this will be useful to you. You may not think so right now, but it will be. So that was one of our other successes with it. Alright, so, I'm going to pass some stuff. So College and Career Readiness Report Card. So Rachel Severs and I, I probably should have held on to one of those for myself. Now that one comes back. So I've got three documents here to just kind of show, show our results for the class of 2018. And then I have some, just some comparison charts from the class 2017. Because everyone likes to see comparisons. Excuse me. Overall, still really impressed with our students. And we should be as a district as a whole. They are pretty impressive when we look at college and career readiness standards. Their attendance rate was still above ninety-nine percent. They were here ninety-nine percent of the time, which leads to their academic success. Almost sixty percent were involved in at least two co-curricular activities. And we look at just school-related activities. So if they were involved in things outside of school, like a youth group or something, that is not factored in, in that co-curricular number. That is just school-sponsored items like athletics or organizations or like the musical. Overall GPA, two point nine six. Eighty, eighty-one percent of them are employed. So they're not just showing up to school, they're also working. One of my favorite correlations is something that we preach to them is that the more involved you are, the better you are academically. And the bottom GPA and co-curricular activity comparison just proves that. You'd think students that are super involved would struggle academically, but they don't. They're able to find the time to do all of it and to be academically successful. And that was a trend that we saw when we compared both the class of seventeen and eighteen together. Almost a quarter of the class took at least one advanced placement course. Over fifty percent earned, or I'm sorry, took dual credit classes earning up to sixty, there were sixty-five total courses that were taken for a hundred and nineteen credits. This does include some AP classes that they took as juniors. And it does include some, what we used to be called college options or youth options. And now it's Start College Now with UWSP. But the majority of it was dual credit with mid-state technical college. The dollar figure that they saved is over fifteen thousand dollars. And that's based on the technical college rate. So those UWSP and AP classes, we don't know what their specific four-year university, what the dollar figure is, but we just base it all on the technical college rate. ACT score of a twenty overall and then their post-secondary plans. So there. A lot of the workforce ones, a couple are wanting to do adult apprenticeship programs. So it's a combination of technical college as well as workforce. But I think most of them listed workforce for that. So there we go. And then we'll hold in other data. So, questions? That's a lot of stuff I just threw at you.
Any idea where that ACT puts us, just off the top of your head?
Compared to other districts?
I, no.
Okay.
I did not look at any comparisons by neighboring districts.
Yeah.
And I didn't look at what the class of nineteenth ACTs were for this year either. We were just looking at the eighteen.
It went up to last year.
It did. Yep, they have gone up.
I can get that though.
Sometimes I'm concerned about the, the number of individuals that are indicating the four-year, four-year university. You know, not all kids make it, but I guess they got to try if that's what they're, what they want.
I, I think, if you know, you know, it dropped compared to the class of seventeen. I think, and, and if you notice the two-year, the, that, the two-year transition, which is interesting that more are going there because it's that really weird transitional year for the two-year campuses. And I didn't know if any would, but we have several selecting that route. I think they're starting to realize that if you want to go four-year, that's awesome. But now it's career in mind. Like, I don't have to go to the four-year. I can get a two-year or I can start at the two-year and then do the transfer, the two-on-two transfer program. A lot of technical colleges, not just mid-state, but a lot of them have transfer programs with their larger overarching four-year campus. So I think our students are getting more informed on their post-secondary options. And I also think our staff is learning that every option is a good option for students. I think for a long time, it was go four-year, go four-year, go four-year. And now it's, you're really good with hands-on, this could, could be an option. If you still want to go four-year, all for that. I think all of our faculty support whatever plan our students have. But I think they're really opening up to the technical college, the two-year campus, adult apprenticeships, all of that. Because I think they see the bigger end in mind of a successful workforce and grads that are going to say, Nacusa prepared me to go onto whatever field I wanted to go on to as best as we could.
And that's really responding to things that we've heard from the private sector, you know, and that they have found that high school graduates just weren't prepared for the workplace with some of the basic skills and basic things they needed. So right on track with, and right in line with our teachers, your teacher's plan as well. So I think it's a big thank you and I think we should give you a congratulations. National stage sixteen.
Yep.
We'll send some pictures back so we can get them.
Yep, I'll have the, the students make sure.
I got a picture from state and.
No, they frown upon that. They frown upon that. I'm just happy, we, I walk with the state president and the who's who representative and we are all short females. So I'm like, like, we will look tall because we're all so small that it won't matter. No one will know that we're just as tiny as can be, so.
Thanks again, Jen.
Thank you. Any questions?
We really appreciate your time. You know, I understand that this involves a lot of manual pulling of data. And thank you. I'm Rachel.
Yep.
Hey. At this point, I'd like to turn the floor over to Ms. Lynn Knight as a services.
Okay, I just want to give you an update on Tapper. They actually came to our district on June seven. They met with Rick and I for about an hour and a half in the morning. We talked about logistics and talked about the staffing, what we've done in the past. Because we wanted to make sure that what the staff have received, they will continue to receive. There were a couple of tweaks that we had to make, but overall, I think the comparables are, are pretty fair. They also observed the lunches in three schools. And they just wanted to get another feel of how things were flowing. They met, then after that, they met with the staff, the school nutrition staff at the, at the high school for about three hours. So I'm hoping, I wasn't part of that meeting, I thought it would be tough if I just kind of backed off. But I, I think they got a lot of their questions answered and the communication lines are now open. They also indicated that there's not going to be a lot of changes right away, especially for summer school because so much planning has already been done. So they're going to let summer school just kind of ride. But they will be back in July to talk about some changes they're going to make before school starts. Mainly how the lines work, what the kitchen layouts are, information like that. Yep, that's all I have.
Thank you, Lynn, thank you very much. And I'm glad that, that they're, they're open and always a communication. As we discussed in our last meeting, you know, as we transition through this change, you know, it's our responsibility to do our best to help our, our folks work through that. And I, I'm glad Tara came in and we'll just have to keep, keep listening and, and just, it's going to work. Mr. Nick, I'd like to address you probably for the last time.
I will be here next month.
You will be here next month.
With Marissa Harnish. We will be.
Very good.
So we're going to have one more month.
We are so fortunate.
Thank you.
The floor is yours, sir.
So graduation is done. That was kind of the big event that we had in the past month. Otherwise, there's a, a whole class reunion, how are they?
All class reunion.
All class reunion on Saturday. So that's start registration is at nine AM, I believe.
Which you can come to as a.
You all find out.
Yeah, I know.
A week away.
The newest one, yeah.
But, so that's the only event early in the next month or so. And then State Track did happen before school let out. I don't know for sure the results of that, but.
We had one student, Mark Long, he said he did play second.
And I understand he just participated in one of your.
Yeah, it's a Midwest regional event. And then he'll actually be going on to a national competition that Mr. Shinkfeld has been working on as well.
Yeah, so we have, Track had many accomplishments this year and it's going to be celebrated. So thank you for bringing that up, Nick.
Absolutely, and that's all I have for short and sweet.
And I'm our golf also.
FBLA and Educators Rising, two clubs that will have people at nationals.
Oh, yeah, so FBLA and Educators Rising both have people going to nationals, so.
Yeah. Good, thank you very much. And what's the weather like for this weekend?
It's hard to say. Probably have a chance of storms, but I hadn't really looked past this weekend of all the severe weather. And I got a great sore cold, so.
Okay.
I haven't really looked that far out.
We're supporting a trap shoot this weekend, right, so it's, it's.
I'll try to keep it okay for you.
I'll make you a call.
No problem.
I might give you a call. Thank you very much. Other board work, safety grant and protocol for safe drop-off and pickup from after-school programs update.
That's me.
Hi, Brian.
Hi, how are you guys?
Good. Brian, sorry. Thank you.
Alright, so I have a quick presentation to kind of go over you with about the school safety grant. Because a lot of people heard that the Wisconsin Department of Justice came out with this huge safety grant in Wisconsin. So why, I just wanted to let you know, so they did put out a hundred million dollar grant for public, private, and charter schools to apply for in order to improve safety within the schools. And looking at this grant, I did a lot of work to kind of get our application in. But the prerequisites that I just want you to know upfront that we had to commit to when applying for the grant is, one, we must guarantee that we are giving staff, all full-time staff. So that's educational assistants, teachers, anyone in the school that's a full-time staff member, at least three hours of education about adverse childhood experiences and trauma-informed, trauma-sensitive schools by the end of next school year. So I started talking with, when I started the application, talking with Diana and talking with the principals of what is this going to look like? Humke actually has started a lot of this discussion already because they are part of a trauma-informed schools grant. So some of this for them is just continuing the work we're already doing. And our school counselors, through their conferences and their training, they have already been trained in the adverse childhood experiences. So this for quite a few of our staff will not be something new for them. Which is exciting because they are basing that off of, that is research-based best practices to get some of these things into place. And that's why it's a prerequisite. Another thing too, in planning our school day, we must plan to have the doors, both the, all entryways during the times they're unlocked, they must be staffed by an adult employee. So that's why some of the talk you've been hearing about, okay, drop-off and pickup procedures are changing. In order to apply to make these improvements, we have to do that to comply with the grant. The other one as well.
What about after-school activities, I mean, requirements are?
Just during the actual school times. So like basketball games, things like that are outside of the actual school day. So we do not have to have that.
Does that include, does that include practices?
No, it's just like school time.
Just guess what time, wait out there.
Beginning and dismissal time. Yep, so it's just the actual school day.
Very good, thank you, Brian.
No problem. And then also too, it required us to work with law enforcement agencies just to make sure they knew the visitor protocols, they knew what we were planning to do. And we were getting basically their seal of approval, saying that this was a collaborative effort. The school district just didn't do it on their own. We actually talked with law enforcement. So through this process, I worked very closely with Josh Collo. We walked through schools, he talked with principals, we met with the school counselor. So this was an involved process. But in order to just apply for the grant, we had to guarantee that these things would happen. So just some basic things about the grants. There were two primary areas we could get money for. So the first one was the primary. And this was ensuring basic school safety was there for all schools. So one was to install safety glass on our main entry doors. This did not count for any other doors. This is just for the main entry. So that's first, if you didn't have that, you had to apply for primary and funds there to make sure that was met. And the other part of primary was as well, every classroom had to have a locking door. So if you didn't have those things, that was the first part of your application, you had to apply for those things. After that, you could go into the advanced category. And this is where things that are above and beyond that, that if you wanted to do improvements to your schools. So this could be additional film for your other entries. This could be safety cameras. This could be training for staff. So if Alice was in, in place and we wanted to get Alice training here, those would be all the kinds of things that we could apply for. But there was a very strict list that said, here are the things that are research-based, that are best practices. And for us to be considered for a priority consideration to get the money to do these projects this summer, we had to put things that were direct. projects this summer, we had to put things that were directly on the list. If you put it, something that wasn't on the list, basically what they were saying was, we are going to go through all priority considerations first and then we'll get to your application. So we were, been waiting quite a while because as you'll hear later, there was an unprecedented amount of people that applied for this grant. So they're kind of backlog now. So we went doing the application, decided, hey, we are going to do priority consideration. So. Um, and the priority consideration, just so you know, and this is where I worked with Lynn quite a bit in the technology department, is we could not go over twenty thousand dollars per school. It, when adding all of our, these safety things to improve our schools, if we want over twenty thousand, we won't priority because we were asking for more than what they allotted per school. So. Um, so what steps did we take? Like I said, um, Josh was a huge part of this, so he met with every single principal, he observed dismissal and arrival times, they talked, gave feedback, and some of the drop-off and pickup times are going to look a little different as per the grant, because we have to look at these things in a safety, from a safety perspective. Um, also our technology department, so Sonata, Eric Saylor, Josh and Heartland Technology, when they walked through the building to look at our security cameras, they said, okay, what places aren't covered yet? Where do we need additional cameras? They also looked at Humke and said, they don't have a camera system. Where would we want to put cameras in there as well? And then we also met with the school counseling team, our school psych, myself and Josh, and we discussed, do we actually know what to do to prevent these crisis situations to happen? And do we actually have skills and a plan for what happens when they do occur? What do we do after it happens? So one of the things that we applied for here was a prepared training at its call. And that's for us to gain skills and ideas because one thing we have to do next January, I will be coming back to you, our emergency action plan has to be board-approved. And we want to put in there, what are we doing to prevent it from happening? And also the plan for what we do if it were to happen that aftermath. Here's what we do as a department. Um, the other things we did apply for, so in that primary category, our building main entrances do not have that shatterproof film. So for all the main entrances, we put that in. We also looked at our other school en- entrances because you think about the high school for basketball games, for volleyball games. It's not necessarily the main entrance that's used, it's the entrance down by the YMCA entrance. So we want to make that secure as well. And same at the male school, you have the main doors, but then you can also go to the left and you have those doors for all your big events. So we looked at other doors to also put that shatterproof glass film on. Um, then for the elementary, we looked at, we budgeted for a security camera system, so they have one in place. And then the male school and high school, we begin additional cameras. So those are the things we requested as per the grant.
Does this grant involve any matching funds or?
Nope.
Wonder if you have to think.
Which is very nice. It's just, here's the money and do it, so. Um, so applications were due Friday, June 8th. Due to the number of schools that applied, because I know some of you are seeing on the news and things like that, here are the schools that are getting the money and were accepted by the grant, just by us turning it in, because I submitted it that last week of school. We're just waiting to hear back, because the, the number that people applied, we're not denied, we're not anything, but we should hear back in June. Sorry, my thing got cut off. Um, but next steps after we find out, I did put in the last district newsletter, I'm creating a parent advisory committee to let them know what's happening and get their input of additional things as well, because one thing we also have to start thinking about, what do we do for severe weather? Because I've been working with Nick as well, for our outside activities, baseball, football, how can we make sure everyone's safe in those situations? So there's a lot of things still that we need to discuss as part of updating our emergency action plan. But I'm not going to schedule our first meeting just until I know the grant allocation, because I want to be able to say, yes, we have it, or no, we don't. Um, then I'm also going to be doing another district newsletter before the next beginning of the school year, just to update parents of the changes that they're going to see in schools, so it's not surprise, we're not doing it because there's a threat, but we're being prepared. So that way they can just expect, oh yeah, I'm going to see this, I'm going to see this, and not to be alarmed. We're just making our school a safer place for kids. And then also to put in the new pickup and drop-off routines as we get those finalized, so they can expect those as well and they're not finding them out on the first day of school, so. Oh, yes, thank you. Um, part of the grant, so the things that I showed you that we budgeted were allowable costs for us to get, to be on that priority list, so we get the money quicker and we can do things this summer. One thing that I know, um, Josh Colow talked about with us was barricades for the doors in the case that a emergency or a crisis would occur. But unfortunately, those were not on the approved list. So we worked with Lynn and we figured out some funding to get those in place, where we're going to be using some district funds to pay for those, but those are not part of the grant, because otherwise we would be at the bottom of the pile.
Sure. So. And it only, I mean, it was less than six thousand dollars for the whole district. So it was a really good deal. Yeah.
Well, overall, if this comes back approved, we are looking at over forty-two thousand dollars in upgrades, all taken care of through this grant. So.
Fantastic. So we had invited Mike in tonight, because he was part of coming to the board, has it been a year? Do you remember when it was?
What?
About a year ago, that you came in mentioning concerns about safety?
As far as?
Just safety around our schools, I think you were coming in.
Well, I came in and, one of my, I came in, yeah, it was a little over a year ago, and I had mentioned the fact that, uh, I think you're referring to when the set, when I came in and talked about the, the fencing needed to be done around solar panels and stuff like that, or safety.
Well, I think just safety in general, yeah. So then he, Mike got involved in, uh, working with John at the elementary school. And, uh, so we, we wanted to make sure that we closed the loop and let you know that we're working on some of these things, certainly not everything.
I mean, my, my biggest, my biggest district concern, I'll be honest with you guys, is that road on the end of this building.
I agree.
I, I am a firm believer that there should not be one student that should be allowed to enter or out of that north end of this building, that Humke, until there's some type of parking accommodations other than the road. Because I'm amazed that no one has gotten hit or, or worse, killed.
So, do you want to talk, John, just a little bit about the work that went in? And I, I know, Mike, you had some ideas that you brought forward that actually they're, they're using, but do you want to talk?
Sure.
Before we talk, are there questions about the grant itself?
Hmm, one thing that, just, just, uh, just observation, I was, I visited the, uh, elementary school shortly after one of our, um, lockdown. Um, and of course, students go through all kinds of emotions when they're going through this. And teachers as well, when teachers stop and consider, you know, the potentials and their responsibility. And there, I think there's some trauma there too, you know, where, you know, we need to be cognizant of our staff's concerns and, and coping strategies with some of these issues that, you know, frankly, when we do these things, it goes, all of it comes to their minds. And, you know, I know that, you know, there's, there's ways in which that we can probably help them like that. And that's probably somewhere on that list or?
That's what they've prepared training.
That'd be the trickle-down from the prepared training.
Yes.
Correct.
Yep.
So that is a consideration. And then, all students interpret it differently.
Correct.
You know, some of them are, and they go home really, you know, they, they, what? You know, it's, you know, so understood. And, you know, and bringing you back, you know, in public comments, we aren't always able to answer you guys with questions. One of the things we want to do with public comments is close the loop. And so that's why we invited you back today, is close that loop on that, you know, the questions that you brought up earlier. Now, we may not be answering all of them, but I hope we're getting some of them.
Well, not with him, he's got tons of them.
Yeah.
Need a couple legal pets.
But, you know, that's what we wanted, to close that loop and then make sure that, you know, there's an understanding that, you know, it wasn't just something that went by, you know, we put down a piece of paper and said, it's going to get addressed. So I appreciate that. So Brian, thank you for that.
And I think John wants to give just a little update on?
Yes.
I, I can give a brief update, a little bit about the work that we did at Humke this, this past spring. Actually, a year ago, one of the things we made a change in our busing routine at the end of the day, and so we were, Officer Cole and I were going to say, let's take a look at it again this spring, and that's what we were doing. And through that process, just, just ironically, a couple of other things happened that led to us really taking a look at our beginning of the day, end of the day routine, and through that process, we, we've made some changes to, um, how that process looks, um, how we had been doing it and what it's going to be looking like right now. We've made some changes to that process that involved our parents, our, our parent group Hippo helped to organize that and lead that, was a parent discretion, uh, discussion, uh, process. And through that then, working with our, our school, uh, resource officer, Officer Cole, we've come up with a new process for next year.
So, and the process is, it's not necessarily in stone, they're going to be monitoring it, I think that's an important piece to remember, because I know there's, you know, certainly, you know, working with, uh, Chief Woods, he, he had some concerns, and we want to be cognizant that we continue to look at the successes that, you know, the, the fall brings with that, that new setup, so. Anybody have any questions on that? I think I've shared some information with the board and updates on that.
So do we not? Sorry.
You want to talk?
Yeah, we, we actually, during our, um, showcase night, we said, hey, parents, here's the new changes, what it's going to look like next year, and we've been disseminating that information right from the start. Uh, essentially, what we are going to have right now is, we have, um, Door A, which is the main door, and I can't, I'm trying to remember exactly right now what it is. That will be, I guess, looking at, first of all, from the start of the day routine, uh, we are going to have Door M, which is our garden doors, be an entry point that is monitored by staff, and that's really going to be designated for kids coming in in that end of the building. We also have down here in the parking lot, um, Door B, which is right there across the parking lot, that's an entry point for staff, and that's open for a twenty-minute window at the start of the day. And we also have the main bus doors coming in, that's Door A. Now, um, at the end of the day, uh, it works a little bit differently. We're still using Door M as an exit point for kids in K1, and staff's helping to transition those kids out those doors. And then we also have, uh, Door B for grades two, three coming out there, but all kids who are riding buses are going on Door A.
Like when you refer to the garden door, it's on the, coming on?
That's the original main entrance to the original building where the garden is.
It's not the normal.
There, that's Door L.
Door L is not going to be?
But, that's the one next to four K, five K, YMCA.
Yeah. But they're going to, they're not going to be using that door, they're going to be going up the door, um, the garden door.
At the start of the day bef- after eight o'clock. The YMCA is open at six-thirty in the morning, they're going to continue to monitor and use Door L, which is the four K, five K door that we kind of think of. They're going to be using that door, they're there and they're going to monitor and take care of that, the YMCA is.
Because that runs from what time in the morning, six-thirty to six?
Six, six-thirty until eight, and then at eight o'clock, we lock that door, and then what will happen is through the garden doors, which is again, um, Door M. What happens is then we're going to have an individual, the kids will be flowing in, through that door, and it will be monitored for a twenty-minute window.
Was anything determined on whether or not the parents were allowed in the building in the morning or in the afternoon on pickup?
Yeah, we have a sign-up system, um, essentially, if you want to come into the building, you can use our sign-up thing. But otherwise, at the end of the day, kids will be brought to the doors outside and handed out to their parents at one of those three locations.
Which is a big change from what we had this last year and past years, where parents would just come in and get their kids.
Total chaos.
But that was controversial because a lot of communication happened between parents and teachers during that time, so I think that was a big, that was a big concern and topic of conversation. Am I correct?
Hey, from a standpoint, right now, our teachers want to build relationships with their parents. And that's a great place to do it, is right at the classroom door. We love that, and we, we're going to miss that, and it's going to be more of a challenge to do that, but we've taken actions to help build that relationship to engage parents and, uh, continue that communication with them.
So.
Is that going to help the safety of that streetway?
Not at all.
And that, I, it's been a long time, mine is graduated and other ones are sophomore. I remember picking my kindergarten up on that street and how unsafe that street is. I mean, it's, I, it's Crestview, right? Isn't that the name?
Yeah.
I mean, I remember not having parking, because the teachers parked down there for a while, then they'd kick them out of there and made them park down here where they belong. Um, and then, but that did stir up the traffic coming up. You got the middle kid, middle school parents flying up from the middle school, you got, there's just a lot of traffic on that road. There's a lot of kids. I don't, I think that's what Mike's concern was, is?
I think that's a bigger safety threat to this school than any camera on a door or safety glass or anything. I think that road, it should be addressed and something should be done there before anything. Now, I understand you're getting grants to do that, and that's great, I'm not cutting you down for that, but I'm just saying, that right now is our district's biggest threat to our students, is that road in the parking down there. Because sooner or later, someone will get hurt, and hopefully not killed.
So, John, what was, I know we, you know, and, and the questions I asked, we're trying to limit that?
They're still using Door M, which is down towards the north end of the thing, which you're still going to end up parking out on Crestview, because where are you going to park if you're picking your kids up on Door M?
Right. Yeah, but, but what we want to try to do is get that traffic down.
Why?
To a more manageable amount, and I think that's what we've got to continue to work at. So how do we funnel kids and parents in, in other places? Like we moved the buses, because we had buses out there this last year. So, but we'll, we'll continue to monitor it.
It's going to be something, and, and we did do some traffic studies during the renovation, you know, when we did the building update, and I know that that data was something I questioned, but I know that it was there, so I think we need to look at it, but fine, well taken. Uh, and thank you very much, John, for the update.
Did you get a map?
Thank you.
Were you able to pick up a map? That shows that, I'll get, I'll send that out.
And, and my, quite honestly, even if it was a gravel parking lot down there where that soccer net is down there, you'd be better off than having people on the street. I mean, I, I realize it's not the most appealing thing to have a gravel parking lot, you're going to have potholes, but it's by far safer than having people crossing that street or darn it cross. There should be no parking lot on the street, and there should be some type of parking lot down there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, yep. If it's okay, if I take on, thanks for that update. We're good, Brian, with what you had to?
Yep.
Okay. Um, going to be continually updated for. Um, Cody has a brand-new board member. We, just in his first month of, uh, of serving, we asked him to attend a CISA 5 meeting, which was the annual Board of Control meeting. And just to kind of give the public update, Cody has taken the office of being our CISA representative, that was previously held by Dave Shiget. Thank you both. Um, any update from that?
Yeah, um, so I attended CISA 5 last month, as Brian stated, and basically it was a workshop for, you know, our ed needs students or specialized students on the spectrum. Basically, they talked about, you know, life after high school. You know, you see them all day at high school, where are they going to be once they graduate? You know, you see them all day at high school, where are they gonna be once they graduate? So, um, they talked about the Dalsalot and Kalahari Resort, where they have like a twelve-week internship for students eighteen to twenty-four, that are still attending the specialized programs at the high school. And then they'll complete internship, um, based off of their life skills, depending on, you know, what they enjoy doing or what they're best at. And then they find a, you know, a job for them at that resort or location to where they can, um, fulfill the needs for that business and, and do the, the job they can do. So, um, basically, at the end of the workshop, there's more than one place in the state of Wisconsin than the Kalahari. For example, Stevens Point, they have, um, Century World, the Century Insurance, that's, I think that's one of the closest locations for, um, you know, employment after school. The pro, um, the program's called Project Search, and it's just a good way to learn, you know, 'cause we do have a good specialized department here at the district, but it's nice to know that there's a place where they're learning in Nacusa, and then they can go somewhere to develop their life skills even more, so, um, I don't know if Brian wanted to comment on any of that, but I think it was a great, you know, great workshop to where we could really extend the learning from Nacusa to somewhere else, so.
Our, we actually have one closer in Wisconsin Rapids, at the Spiders River View Clinic, that has been there for, this was year three, um, from, yeah, year three. So, we've been sending students there, actually, this, just early, or May thirtieth, we had a, three Nacusa students go there and participate in the program. One actually graduated and is fully employed over at the Nacusa, um, casino here in town, and two others, one got a summer internship with the Spiders River View Hospital in their pharmacy department, and another one is still job searching at this time. But we have had students attend, and we have three students going there next year, but I agree with you, it's a wonderful, wonderful program for students to gain vocational skills and gain those soft skills. So, it's one that, um, for Edwards, Nacusa, and Wisconsin Rapids all have students attending it right now, but a great, great program, so.
And one more thing I just wanted to point out, um, with Project Search is that they strive on getting, uh, those students back into our community, so they're back at home with their families, or, so, that's what's so great about the, the program, yeah, so.
Sounds like a great meeting and a great, great way to start. Thank you, Cody, for attending that.
You're welcome.
And thank you for the update. Two thousand eighteen, eighteen preliminary budget.
Okay.
Right, I have mine?
I don't know.
Hope it just has to fail me a second.
Okay.
There it is.
So, the school board typically passes a, um, that's, that was, passes a preliminary budget in June to authorize spending, uh, until the final budget is passed in October. As I've said before, the preliminary budget is, um, a very, it's a very skeletal, skeletal budget, because we only know about five percent of what we need to know in order to build a budget. So, I just wanna take you through, um, how I prepared the preliminary budget, I'm gonna refer to these tables. So, the first table, Table one, is basically, um, comparing the seventeen eighteen budget in the six funds that we budget for. So, um, the budget, the funds that we budget for is the general fund and special education, which is called our operating funds. Then we have our debt service, Fund Thirty-eight and Fund Thirty-nine, Fund Fifty is our school nutrition, and Fund Eighty is our community service. So those are the funds that we actually build budgets for, uh, for the follow-up, for the next school year. Now, the seventeen eighteen budget is the actual budget that was adopted back in October. Uh, the eighteen nineteen budget is actually taken from the Forecast Five model. Uh, so there are some differences, uh, and I'm mainly looking at Fund Ten. The revenue is compared from seven, 'cause I needed a starting point, that's why I started at, at seventeen eighteen, 'cause I needed a, a starting point for the eighteen nineteen budget. So the model is predicting revenues decreasing by four hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven seventy-three, and expenses increasing by fourteen, or by one hundred and thirty-two thousand nine ninety-two, which brings us to a deficit of five seventy-one seven sixty-five. Now, in Table two, I kind of reconciled the differences for the revenues and expenses. So the four hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven seventy-three difference is made up of, our taxes are going down by three hundred and forty-eight thousand, our open enrollment revenue is going down by a hundred and forty-eight thousand, our state aid is going down by a hundred and seventy thousand, our computer aid is going up by a hundred and forty-three dollars, and our per pupil aid is going up by two hundred and twenty-eight thousand ninety-six dollars. Now, our per pupil aid is, for the eighteen nineteen budget, was dictated by the biennial budget, the last budget that the state passed. We're going from four hundred and fifty dollars per pupil up to six hundred and fifty-four dollars per pupil. So that's what makes up the two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, uh, ninety-six dollars. Now, when I looked at the revenue limit worksheet, which dictates how much revenue we can raise in property taxes and state aid, uh, the revenue limit base amount, or our, our, the amount that we're allowed to raise, is decreasing by about five hundred thousand dollars. So, we, our revenue is decreasing, there's, there's no other way to say it. On the other hand, our Fund Ten expenses are increasing. Uh, our open enrollment expenses are increasing by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and these are students, our residents, that are going elsewhere to be, to be taught. Our payment to state, which is a voucher program, and we have absolutely no control over that figure, is going up by about thirty-nine thousand, and the transfers are going down by thirty-four thousand seven fifty-eight. Now, the seventeen eighteen budget for transfers in, is the special education fund transfer and the school nutrition transfer. So every year, we have to make special education whole, so that means we are transferring from the general fund into Fund Twenty-seven, the special education fund. Now, because we were running at a deficit for our school nutrition, for the past, uh, I believe, three or four years, we had to transfer from the general fund into the school nutrition fund. So that's what makes up the one thousand four eighteen five seventy-three in seventeen eighteen. We're predicting that the special education transfer is going down by thirty-four thousand. So when you add up the four hundred and thirty-eight thousand death, or, uh, revenue decrease and the increase in expenses, that makes up the five hundred and seventy-one thousand seven sixty-five deficit. So we, we, we were looking at this probably since December, January, and we were trying to address how we're going to make up that deficit. And then we go to Table three. So we start out with our Fund Ten deficit. We, with the, uh, passage of, uh, Tahoe as our school nutrition, we no longer have that transfer from Fund Ten into Fund Fifty. So that was ninety-one thousand five seventy-five. So we're subtracting that from that deficit. We are, throughout the year, or throughout the year, we have been replacing some of our staff, some staff resigned, some staff have retired, so we've been replacing that staff, and the net effect of that is a fourteen thousand five hundred dollar savings. We have also eliminated some positions, because with declining enrollment, we need to eliminate some, uh, positions, and that typically is through attrition, and that's about four hundred and seventy-nine thousand six fifty-seven. We had an eight percent increase in our health insurance, and I just wanna talk about that just for a little bit. Um, I think it was two years ago, this board passed, uh, our participation into a health insurance consortium. Prior to that, we were with WEA, and we were looking at an over twenty percent increase in our health insurance premiums. Our loss ratio is atrocious. Um, we have a lot of illness in our district and a lot of cancers, so our loss ratio is not feasible for us to go out on our own. So, our insurance consultant, um, met with Rick and I, and talked about, um, developing an insurance consortium with twelve members that are basically in the same position we're in. They were looking at huge increases, and we thought that if we got together, we could have increased the buying power, and, uh, we actually formed a consortium. This is the second year of the consortium, and, uh, the consortium agreement stated that we had a cap on our second-year increase of nine percent. It came in at eight, and we were ecstatic, so we're really happy with that eight percent increase. Now, granted, I'd be much better with a zero percent increase, but knowing that they could have went up to nine, and we've got an eight, I, I'm okay with that.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
That's okay.
Yes.
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, we were at twenty percent of previous years for the, um, health insurance? So did it go from twenty percent plus to eight percent, or did it go from twenty percent down to eight percent?
We were looking at a twenty percent, and that's why we went out for bid.
Okay.
Yeah, so we never actually recognized a twenty percent increase.
Okay, so it's just that eight percent, where, I mean, what percent was it before the eight percent increase, do you recall at all, or?
Um, last, or the last time we had an increase is when we actually switched our benefits as well.
Okay.
So we're always trying to, to save money in our benefits. We, um, actually did shave off some benefits that were kind of dead benefits, because nobody really used them.
Okay.
So, uh, when we looked at that, then we were looking at a four percent increase.
Okay.
Okay.
But do you recall the number from where it was? Like, what, what's the number at, the percent right now, do you know?
It, I guess I'm not understanding the question.
Um, just like the percentage, like what percent of the health insurance are we at now prior to the eight percent increase? Like, what was the number plus eight percent?
As far as the cost to employees, is that what you're looking at? Okay.
Well, I don't know the, uh, exact premium down.
Premium cost is, I think, what you're looking for? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that, we can get, the one question I had, we have three tiers of insurance?
Correct.
Is that eight percent gonna be across the board?
Yes.
With us, okay.
Yes, yes.
It is difficult with a small group, you know, the experience factor, and then, you know, if not for the consortium, with our experience, I doubt many better to look at as a small group. As a member of the consortium, we are eleven times the size or more.
Yes.
And so that experience is spread across all eleven participating members at consortium. Now, the one nice thing about an experience-based system is that if the loss ratio has dropped, that net result can be seen very quickly. We may be looking at no increase, we may be looking at reduction, and it, it really is dependent upon the loss records that we have. We're fortunate that, you know, for those individuals that do have a difficult issue, that we do have the health insurance. But I think if you looked across the board, I, I think I, I, the research I did, eight percent's on the low end from what all other companies are looking at right now. But it's not, I'm not hap, it's not nice to increase anything.
What, what is the, um, I mean, it's a consortium, but do, how do we know that's the lowest rate? Do they shop around, or is that information? I, I see it here, but I don't see it, you know, how do I know that's the, the best rate we can get?
We have an insurance consultant through Security Health, or through M three, and we've been working with them for ten years.
So did they shop with, uh?
Always.
We have Security Health.
Yeah.
They're always.
Yeah, we do.
If we go out for bid every year, that sends a bad signal to the insurance industry.
So did we go out for bid here?
We did not go out for bid this year, we went out for bid last year, and we had a two-year contract on.
Generally, you don't wanna go for bids any more than once every three years? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Well, if my insurance rates go up two hundred thousand dollars, I don't wanna go for the bid. That's the one, they're gonna tell me they can't.
Well, part of this, though, was, it was a two-year agreement, knowing that there was that nine percent gap.
So next year, if it goes up a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, we can say no thanks.
We have our insurance, our insurance consultant fighting tooth and nail for us, and they check those figures.
And that's three years, too.
And, and some, and something like that, um, for someone like me that likes to do a lot of research, um, when it comes to, you know, data like this, you know, the more information that us board members can have, you know, the easier decisions are made, so, you know, if there is never, you know, some data collected, the more that we have, the better.
A lot of that data is protected.
Oh, it's protected?
Yes.
That makes sense.
But it might be wise, it might, you know, for you to meet her, the people that, that, but, and, and three, and just knowing and understanding what they do. I should never bring in our previous experience, but they were my agent in my previous life as well.
If the board would like them to come and present one day, I, I can certainly invite that.
I think it'd be beneficial.
No problem.
Better understanding, but.
Okay.
You know, as far as what we're locked into and contract-wise, and I see a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, and I see all this, who's that money, and I get concerned. This is why we're not opting, so.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you can, right, but I didn't know that.
Right. I think it would be good to have somebody come in.
Sure.
I think we should maybe identify, 'cause M three does so much, other than just the health insurance.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
And that, you know, maybe we as a board can just, you know, maybe talk about that, and, you know, what things we'd like to look at.
Yeah, and it's the same company we've been working with, so they'll be able to compare what we had before consortium, too, so.
How does the consortium work, say, we're not, I mean, can we get out of that if we want to, if that's okay?
Yes, we can.
If they say it's no longer benefiting you?
We could, but if we went on our own, I can guarantee you, it's going to be in the double digits, 'cause our loss ratio is terrible. That's the reason why we joined the consortium.
But we can't if we needed to?
Yes.
We're not locked in?
Yes. Do you want me to continue?
I think, I think, I don't know, are you guys, I think?
I'm, I'm okay, yeah.
But I think we need, I think there was, we identified that it might be an opportunity for some work, so, but, please proceed.
Okay. So then, um, the eighty thousand dollars is the AMS NHS instructional coach, and that was, um, that came out of the reconfiguration that we did at, uh, Humkey. So when you add all of those up, we are still looking at a deficit of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven thirty-three, was that right?
Yes.
Well, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, just a note is that as part of our reconfig, reconfiguration, we checked, we opted to not replace my former position as Director of Instruction.
Thank you.
So we eliminated an administrative position, um, towards that. And we're, at the same time, with other retirements, we wanted to make sure that we still need to adequately support our staff, and being able to help them improve and work with that, and so we're, we're adding that back into it to make sure that we have all the proper support.
Thanks, Nika. I lost my rhythm, so.
Right. And we, and part of that, too, is attracting us to what's position, and reallocating these responsibilities that these two individuals had.
That's gonna be a new term.
Shifting our responsibilities.
Shifting responsibilities.
So Sue Wolf has resigned, everybody?
So we're not everybody's hands, but then did somebody say that, but we are?
No.
No, we are, we're not, we have one less administrative position, and then it goes to Swole District as of June, third, uh, as of, uh, January, Ju, July first.
July.
I'll get the, I'll get the mind right there. And so, but one, on this particular move, uh, we had the retirement of Sue Wolf, who we can't replace everything she did, let's just be honest about that, but, and then, um, my position, my duties and various things as Director of Instruction, we went ahead and divided that up among, amongst the team, among other ways to be able to handle that on the administrative team, but we're not having that being a salary position anymore.
To that money.
So that was a, that, that's reflected in the positions eliminated, uh, figure that you see there, and so, but that.
That we're buying back.
So that's not in addition to the two, that's not coming off the two twenty?
No, that, it would've been steeper if we not done.
That's already off. That's part of that four seventy, yeah.
But, you know, I'm just saying that we can't, in removing basically two support positions, um, for our staff, we need to go ahead and make sure that we can't just cut, cut, cut. I believe it was said once by the, um, owner of, of, one, one president's of an airline, he says, of the various things, you're trying to get weight in an airline, the one thing you can't cut is the motor. You know, there's, as, as.
That would be dangerous.
And as a working person. And one of those is, we need to support our staff, we need to be able to help our staff be operating the best we can, so that's what that position is there for.
So that leaves the deficit of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven thirty-three, but I need to caution you that we have, this is a very, very preliminary budget, there's a lot of numbers that are not known yet, there's a lot of things that are not in this eighteen nineteen budget. Uh, it is basically just used for, to authorize spending for the first three and a half months until the state finally releases their final figures in mid-October, and we have our annual meeting and pass our final budget.
Can I just, for your benefit, is there an requirement that we do this by this date?
Yeah, I learned last year.
Okay.
In one oh one.
Thank you, and so.
The next, the next few pages. So, the next, the next few pages are, um, the actual budget that the board is required to adopt, um, in the format that's presented. It doesn't mean a lot, but that's the way state statute basically says you have to adopt the budget is by this, this format.
And I, unless there's any other questions, and I believe there were some good questions. This, this is, you know, we have to do this, this, just because, um, at this point, I'd call motion to approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen budget as presented.
I'll make that one.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Thank you. Um, you're not done, Len?
No, I'm not.
Daniel, are you, other post-employment benefits? Did I get that correct?
Yes.
Acronyms, hold up.
Other post-employment, you got it, you got it. So, um, this was, uh, we, um, the board readjusted the other post-employment benefit back in two thousand twelve. Um, so it basically re, in time, it's going to eliminate the other post-employment benefit. At that time, the employees, we had to have like a stopping point. The employees in, um, had the choice if they qualified to select, uh, health insurance in their post-employment benefit or to not elect health insurance and receive a current benefit of a tax-sheltered annuity benefit.
That's, that's your question.
At that time, thirty chose to be in group one, which was the health insurance benefit. And the remaining, uh, twenty chose to be in group two. Um, at the, at the time that this was passed, the board also said that they wanted to review this benefit on an annual basis, just to see where we were at with our liability. I'm gonna go back to the second page where, back in two thousand twelve thirteen, you can see that our, uh, post-employment benefit, our expense, was close to eight hundred thousand dollars. For the eighteen nineteen budget, we are projecting an expense of two hundred eighty-one thousand seven seventy-eight. These are actual, uh, this benefit is basically a health insurance benefit for retirees. That's, that's what it is. The reason it's going up from seventeen eighteen to eighteen nineteen is that some of these folks that chose to be in group one, those thirty folks, are retiring and they're receiving the benefit now. So, uh, we have nineteen folks left in group one out of thirty. So it is slowly going down. And as these, uh, other folks retire and receive the group one benefit, they will receive it until they've obtained the age of sixty-five, which is Medicare eligibility. And then we will no longer have a post-employment benefit. So it's gonna take a while and we're gonna see that little wave until those folks actually, you know, use up their benefit. So, um, as we look at the, at the expense, I am not proposing any changes to this benefit. Uh, right now, or back in two thousand twelve, uh, the board approved a maximum amount of thirteen thousand dollars for a family for, um, for the post-employment benefit for those retirees. So, questions?
So is this just a contract issue at the time or how is this?
It was back in, when, prior to Act Ten, this was in their union contract. And when Act Ten was implemented, uh, it opened the door for school boards to look at this benefit and adjust to what they could afford.
And to give teachers a choice in some respects as to where, you know, affordability for some of those teachers that chose option two.
Yes.
It's more of a portable, um, option for them, that they can take, you know, if they're not gonna be with the HUSA, it can follow them. It was, this decision mainly driven by how many years of service we had. Um, is, is the way it worked out. And there were, it wasn't a pleasant time by any means. Um, it was a difficult time, but we were also faced with some pretty heavy hits back then too. And there was a great deal of work and, you know, the meeting, I can remember the meeting in my mind, it was the auditorium. And we had a pretty full audience. And we took a lot of feedback, you know, and a lot of discussion. But again, you know, they look at us annually and know where we are.
So each person in that group two now can get a match in their TSA? And they will never receive this post-employment benefit? They're building up for it now? Does that make sense? So that was the other option?
It's basically, it's kind of similar to a 401K, where if you leave, that goes away.
I would probably.
Think that helps.
Yeah. That's all she had to say, look, and I, I tried.
I tried to say the same thing.
She said it better.
Okay, uh, no board action is required in that. AGR, which must be reviewed.
That would be me, and I'm gonna give you right now and keep this, a little handout. As it comes around, a quick analysis again, or not analysis, definition right now, AGR, achievement gap reduction. We, as a school district, apply for and receive a grant from the state to help fund achievement gap reduction. Again, it needs to be part of Sage. And what we do is, um, use that money and we put it towards staffing. And we use that staffing right now in the form of a coach to help improve instructional practices in the classroom. One of the things, though, my second year at Humpy, what I did is, uh, again, individuals create an, an objective in which they're pursuing in reading and math, and we use mainly, again, coaching to do that. And this is just one data point that we use. Uh, we have other means of tracking data, but this right now I shared with you as, in requirement and fulfilling the obligation of AGR is to share with you the work that we've done around that and just the results related to that. So, the neat thing is, um, each team, kindergarten, uh, first grade, second grade, third grade, they choose an objective in reading and math. Most of them have chosen the same thing over the last two, the previous two years since I've been there. Uh, third grade, they, they went in a different direction and tracked that data point and monitored that. And so that one doesn't reflect a difference of years, but for me, I like noting the difference between one year to the next. And the sheet that I gave you right now reflects the difference in changes from one year to the next. So with that, I, that is the AGR report.
I noticed the redum, the redumping in percentages of.
Well, from, compared to the.
The previous year.
But, yeah, so can you just?
Sure, we had, we had some really good scores in seventeen in kindergarten and it did drop in eighteen in kindergarten. The other scores related into the other grades were pretty much the same or slightly higher, um, and first and second. And third grade, again, you can't compare year to year because there weren't the same objective that they were shoot, shooting for. So I split those out. And, um, other than that.
I guess can you just briefly talk, is there something identified as to what happened?
Oh.
I'm just looking at the first page, but.
It's a different cohort. It's a different group of students too. Yeah, and so, you know.
So that's part of it too, because it's not, you're not comparing apples to apples. It's a new group because you have this two thousand seventeen kindergarten and two thousand eighteen.
Is there a benchmark? We have a benchmark assessment in which we use, but that is not figured into AGR. Uh, we use STAR for that and that's a fall, winter and spring, um, benchmark that we use. And then from that, we use that to drive, um, decisions about instruction. And that's figured into our data wall, um, protocol, which is not reflected in here. And that's a different set of results. So during the course of year, we're like, okay, this is where the kids are at. Let's figure out what we can do, um, to get these kids at or above grade level to proficiency.
So I guess in layman's terms, I don't know if these are good numbers or not good numbers. There's seventy-six percent, I'm just looking at the first one, sixty-one on eighty students. So the method will identify fifty-two letters. Is that where they should, is that where we expect them to be or, I mean, I don't know.
When I look at those numbers, I would want them to be higher.
Okay.
Um, they're not. And at the same time, you know, I guess as I look at them right now, two sets of data marks. I can't draw a lot of conclusions from that. It's also not that ninety-one percent is phenomenal numbers.
Yeah, well, I, I'm just wondering like school, other schools or if there's any, I guess, benchmarks somewhere.
This is just what we're tracking within our classrooms. I know that other schools are using, they create their own AGR goals and what they're looking for. I would have to believe that other schools are creating something similar to this. I don't have access to that, we don't know that.
I mean, these could, could be phenomenal, phenomenal numbers.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah, and th- those are good questions to ask. And at this point right now, I, I can look at it, okay, I've got two sets of numbers over two years and then measure the same thing with different cohorts and a multitude of other variables that are different. Because again.
And just to speak to those numbers, I mean, cause that's gonna be a large concern. What does that, what do the, what do the numbers mean? One thing important to note here is that, as noted, some, what, in a, in a group that is this small, about eighty, you're gonna have wide variability from one year to the next. At the same time, what we're looking in, what we're looking at is how do we help that group improve one year to the next? And this group is kindergarten, we've only had one year with them. We'll have a better idea after next year where they're at and be able to make adjustments as we're doing that. But we're trying to, as much as possible, compare students to themselves over prior years and be able to, and that's, gives us a bit more actual number than always just because each group will be different one to the next.
And my question too is, you know, always, so this kindergarten, hopefully we're gonna have a larger kindergarten and summer school. So what are we doing to constantly continue to move those kids along? They're good questions. And I do like that you have that comparison, so we'll be, we'll get forward to it.
We'll see what's the gap. Year from that, eleven other seconds.
And with this information we shared, say, with, uh, you know, how, how will it feed in the first grade? Is this gonna be something that's identified?
We actually, well, yes, is the answer to that question. But again, this is one of several data points. One of the things that we have is a data wall in which we're tracking results on where kids are at individually. We, kids are at these levels of emerging, developing, exceeding or exceeding. That's part of our passive information that teachers get. And so they can help make decisions about what kids need for interventions. So that's, that's a much more robust measure in terms of, it's really a triangulation of several data.
You need to share that with the board.
That's a, that's another data.
Yeah, and I, I think what, you know, what this needs to do is the fact that these individuals that are moving on to first grade are identified and that we are gonna institute specific strategies to get them to grade level achievement or grade level expectations and that the resources that we currently allocated should, should be able to address some of these issues. Right?
Yeah.
Good. AGR, uh, and then I think you, thank you, John, thanks for this information, information. Um, we're gonna talk about parent satisfaction survey.
How many is that?
Uh, well, I sent it out to everybody and I wanted to make sure, I wanted to answer any questions that people had. And two of the, uh, two of the, the things that stood out, uh, in the summary really followed up on everything we've been talking about. And that is really the, uh, the behaviors and then academic rigor. So, and, and certainly I can only imagine that at SAIL, you guys have been talking, uh, you must have been talking about socio-emotional learning and behaviors and academic rigor. I don't understand, do you wanna talk to that or did the board have other questions?
I guess any.
Uh, from the parent summary?
Did, anything that you grew from the parent summary that?
Those are the, the two main things. Is there a section where I didn't see the comments? Should we see the comment?
Sure. You want the raw data?
Unless I missed them.
No, they're, that's just the summary.
Okay. I, I wouldn't mind seeing them.
Okay.
And it's, I guess it's consistent with what we heard through the teaching planning process. You know, it's a, it's a common, a common thread. And it's nice to see when you have two measurements tell you the same thing, um, or two, two goals, so. There, and again, we know the work is going on within SAIL and within the other operations to address those issues. Okay. At this point, we're moving on to policy governance. What we want, any questions, anybody before we move on? Comments, suggestions? Okay. What we want, um, global operational expect, uh, expectation. Um, the board was notified, uh, via email, on this expectation. And the interpretation of this is.
Have it read it?
Already done. All decisions made, actions taken, practices and activities, and activities by employees and students in the district will be legal, ethical, safe, respectful, response, responsible and in accordance with board policies. Such decisions and actions will be made with the best interest and future success of the district as a priority. And I should have, this is the responsibility of the district administrator. Um, indicators of compliance, you can cover that.
So operational monitoring reports shall be completed according to the board's annual work and all policies will be maintained on a regular basis. And then building plans will be in alignment with district strategic actions outlined with specific tasks to, tasks to be accomplished each year in pursuit of the board's results policies. So this is the global operational expectations, uh, policy.
And essentially, the, the operational expectations that we look at on a monthly basis, which are on our monthly calendar for the year, cover all of these issues and support this global expectation. Is that a correct statement?
Correct.
Very good. The strengths of this policy, I think it should be noted that we have a monthly calendar that is, am I gonna catch this plan as a strength? Um, a monthly calendar that assures us that we will, I, we will examine all operational expectations and results policies. Other strengths that we identified?
We had talked about all policies being maintained on a regular basis through that calendar.
Can I just say that?
Well, you, you mentioned a calendar, but we're, we're, we're going over the policies too.
Correct. Yeah.
And then the, the buildings are all aligned with that strategic plan. I think that's a huge plus, so that the district is in vertical alignment. Each supporting each other and the work that's being done towards this stra- strategy plan.
School, hospital, and improvement plans are designed, district strategic planning priorities. Going our strengths, we see that, uh, things are aligned with our, with our mission and our strategic plan. We're all moving in the same direction. Any weaknesses? We didn't identify any weaknesses or non-compliance, so.
Well, I, I do wanna say that, Brian, you had something that you wanted to share.
Well, Thursday.
But it's really addressing another policy.
Yeah. Thursday, we just discussed the, um, district's public image. And I think it was just captured real briefly in the, in the comments from the survey that we said, and behaviors.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that this policy doesn't allow us to dive into that.
Right.
Topic that we should dive into and.
Yeah. You know, addressing public opinion and or, you know, some of those things, I'll bring that, that we as a district have to be aware of what our stakeholders see in our district. And, you know, we need, when we look at our, our actions and what we're, what we're doing, we need to make sure that we're addressing those concerns and our stakeholders' needs. Does that cover it, Brian?
Correct, which is more indefinite when we get into those different.
I actually have a circle in mind to, to involve. This was a good discussion point. Um, the board finds itself being fully and complete compliance. At this time, I'd like to call for motion to approve what we want, global operational expectation as presented and verified by the board.
I'll move. Second.
We have a motion, the second, all volunteer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Thank you. Financial administration, only seven. And then I would like to thank you for the work that you put into this document. Lynn, I would like to thank you for the work that you've put into this document. Strengths, I think, certainly, our performance on the audit is a strength. Doug, would you, would you have anything to add, to the strengths?
Well, actually, Lynn does a really good job, her and her team, every year, to create our budget and then follow it. So, I appreciate that very much. I don't believe, did we find it, did we have any findings for this, Lynn?
Well, there's things that I want to improve on.
I mean, there's always things that we can improve on, but I don't think that we had any findings for this. Obviously, every year, we have an audit by an outside third party. And last year, like, I think, every year since I've been on the board, we have had no, we had no findings, which is very good. So, we do have a very strong financial plan and very strong financial records.
No findings.
Because of the whole team, not just because we...
Yes.
There's a number of portions of this regarding our responsibility to not spend beyond our means. It also encompasses the use of competitive bidding procedures for all transactions of excess of fifteen thousand dollars. It, it protects our, our district's monies and, you know, allows the board to see that. In the past, I don't think that there was that level of control. In fact, dire number of about a one point two million dollar.
It wasn't my fault.
I didn't even look here at that time.
I just cleaned it up.
We've come a long way, so, we want to thank you for that. Yeah, and, you know, I wasn't for that, but, again, it's a team effort, and I want to thank everybody. Any questions, Cody, Brian? Yeah? Okay, at this time, I'd like to do, call for a motion to approve, oh, you seven, financial administration is presented and verified by the board.
So, move.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. GP two, guiding principles, governance commitment. I lost my sheet.
You want me to read the policy statement?
Please do.
So, the NACUSA Board of Education supports the welfare and education of students, the interests of the community, and the work of the staff. The board shall hold itself accountable to property taxpayers of the school district in NACUSA, who are the owners of the district, by ensuring that all its actions are consistent with the board policies and in compliance with state and federal statutes and regulations. In order to meet these obligations and to model expectations for the learning enterprise at the core of the district, the board commits itself to engage in rigorous and continuous development improvement of its capacity to govern, use its policies to define its values and expectations, assure the organization achieves the results described in its results policies, assure the district operates with, within the parameters described in its operational expectations, and to abide by its policy commitments contained in its board district administrative relations and governance process policies. That's GP two.
Thank you. We had a good discussion on this the other night. One of the thoughts that I got in regards to this is, for us to be effective in our positions, we at times also can benefit from additional training. As a board member, there are, there are trainings that are offered through WSB and other organizations that can help us to more effectively carry out our roles and identify those items that, that we are indeed responsible for. It kind of goes hand in hand with what I spoke with, with CWSA and, and, you know, defining the role of a, of a board member. And so, I would, I would, I would, I would say that's a weakness, is that, that...
I think we...
An opportunity for improvement.
Opportunity, yeah.
I'm going to call it an opportunity for improvement. That we as board members endeavor to attend at least one training a year. And it might be together, it might be on site. But, I think that we need, you know, we certainly put that responsibility on our administrators and those that, that work for the district. And I think we're going to expect ourselves to do the same. Beyond that, there were no non-compliance as found. The strength, strengths that we have here, we didn't really talk about those. But, the system that we have really forces the board to work in a very interactive role with the district administrator. We empower him to do so many things, and we're fortunate to have a very strong relationship. Any other strengths, gentlemen, that you could recall from our...
I think we have a pretty good monitoring calendar. So, we do have a good system to go through our policies and monitor them every month, so...
I can honestly say that, you know, and that's a good comment, as a board member, since policy governance inception, in the last year and a half, I know more, understand more, and can address our stakeholder concerns better than I ever could. And I think that's a strength of the system and a strength of the information that we receive on a monthly basis from the administrators. Thank you, gentlemen, from our student representatives, from our public. We learned, we learned, we learned for everybody, so, thank you. Open communication is a strength, let's write that down. Diana, do you need any, just additional training for the board as an opportunity for improvement? Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Board finds itself to be in full and complete compliance with the before-mentioned strengths and opportunities for improvement. I call for motion to approve the governance process, GP two, governance commitment, monitoring report as presented and verified by the board.
So, move.
One second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. We have several resignations and we have several employment. Do we wish to discuss any of these?
I would like to add one, if possible, as well. I just received today a letter resignation from Emily Nicholas, our speech and language pathologist. She has been with us for two years and it is a huge loss. She is phenomenal. She has done so many good things to help teachers understand what speech and language disabilities are and how she has also taken on the chance to co-teach some classes and go into classes to help kids transfer their speech and language skills that they're learning right into the classroom. And her and I had a long conversation, a tear-y conversation. It really is, her and her husband just got married this last summer. And an opportunity came up as they tried to start a family closer to home. She's like, it's one of the hardest decisions I've had to make in a really long time, so, I wish her nothing but the best. So, and told her the door is always open to her, so, it was...
And we did receive her resignation, and I'll forward that on to Diana Will. And she was very thankful for the opportunity, and she served here two years. Thank you. But, we hate to see her go.
Yeah.
And do we want to touch on others?
Sure, I talked to Joe.
Sure.
He is going to be teaching, he's going to Port Edward, has to do with teaching middle school. He really wants to teach middle school. It's also a slight bit closer to home for him. Those are the driving forces between, behind him resigning. And M is flat-out wanting to be closer to home. That, she's from the Janesville area, and that is one hundred percent what that one is related to. In fact, she was very emphatic at every turn, saying that it has nothing to do with the district. It all has to do with being closer to home. She, every weekend, would go back home. She never had connections in the area. It's a sad situation because she was a wonderful teacher, both Joe and M are, are great teachers.
I'd like to speak to Chuck Baldischweiler, and again, also a very difficult decision for him. He's, in the many years in his, in the district, he's taught in several different capacities. He's been seventh grade math, fifth grade teacher, CWSA, back to seventh grade math this past year. And in his, he's making a move to be able to be teaching more in an area passionate for him. He's moving as a technology teacher in a different district. And that's an area that he's developed skills and wants to continue for it. And it's, again, a difficult decision for him. And I'm, on a personal note, he taught all three of my children. I'm very grateful for the service and their experience together with him. And we're just, so many people are so grateful for the work Mr. Baldischweiler's given our, our district over the years. And I'd like to express that, that gratitude here as well.
Many thanks to those teachers and what they've given to our district. It's hard to see them go. I do have a thank you letter that I'd like to read. Or do you just want me to share this? We received a letter, a member of the school board, thank you for the gift of money that you gave us with the passing of my father. This is Michelle McElroy. I am hoping to set up a memorial fund in his honor at those concert outfits, Moravian Church, with the monies that we have received. Thanks again. Very nice letter. Donations, or do you like to read our donations up? Do you have one?
Yeah, I got it. So, Carol Hippola donated two large bags of fleece for the rug-making adult enrichment course. And then, Danny and Sharon Olson donated a wheelchair to AMS. We also have backpack for kids, one forty from Sacred Heart, five hundred for Hippo, forty-five from Bethlehem Lutheran Church, and then, seventy-two, seventy-five from AMS Staff Jeans and Tees.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for those donations, for the backpack for kids and the other donations as well. Wouldn't know what to do without them. I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So, move. Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Future meetings and agenda items, July twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, policy governance. We're going to be looking at BSR one, BR SR two, and then, oh, you two, emergency district administrator succession, oh, you four, personnel administration, and GP one, board focus, July seventeenth. This is our regular board meeting, is this correct?
Yes.
Yes. Policy governance. We do also have a responsibility to, we need to, we need to complete the evaluation of the district administrator.
So, we wanted two dates for that, correct?
We need two dates. It's needed to be completed by July fifteenth. The last time we did this, gentlemen, we, we did work for two hours, two nights. I'm thinking as big as about an hour and a half to complete the process. And then, we need to sit down with Terry and all of that. The dates that, that we have, I know that many of you have summer plans. The last week in June is next week. Is there a chance we can get Tuesday and Thursday nights?
I'll be back.
Thursday, Thursday night, right now, we can talk to you later. We only have to meet once next time because the second, the second time, we're going to be meeting with you.
It's only one, see, I saved. Brian, you owe me one meeting next week instead of two.
When are you going to...
Thursday better than Tuesday, I mean. Tuesday's, we have to...
Thursday.
No, 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 wait, hold it, hold it, hold it. I've got my date, I'm good, too.
So, Tuesday the twenty-sixth.
Thursday.
Thursday the twenty-eighth, Thursday.
Right.
Yeah?
So...
At six o'clock.
And then, we'll have to schedule upon your return, Terry, we're going to have to schedule another one.
Yeah.
So, we'll bring that up. Brian Mahon.
You're up.
What was yours?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. Turned out to be a longer meeting than we thought.
It's really good. Keith, I told you an hour.
No.
If you want, ever listen to me.